Now, we would like to begin the special session of Tokyo Global Dialogue, the Maritime and Security around Japan. My name is Kotani, a moderator for this session with JIYI. If you look around the security environment around Japan, the tension around the Taiwan Strait is increasing. In August 22, the former Speaker of the House of the United States, Pelosi, visited there and encountering that, China conducted drills. And in emergencies, including the air, the sea blockade might be a possibility. That was shown. And here, the ballistic missile to the areas not far from the Japanese territorial water, the missiles were launched. And also, the Chinese, the provocation is increasing. And also, China and Russia conducting joint exercises and cruises around Japan. So there is a closer cooperation between China and Russia. And Japan came up with the policies to strengthen the capabilities for defense. And around these issues, we'd like to have a discussion in this session. Now, today, we have three panelists from Japan, Taiwan, and the United States. Now, including the introduction first, I would like to ask each person the same question. First, to the, how do they assess the cross-strait relations? And from the perspective of peace, the Japanese three defense security documents, how, what sort of a change would that bring about? In addition, Russia is invading Ukraine. And the tomorrow, well, the today of Ukraine is said to be the tomorrow of Asia. And how concerned should we be? And how the three countries should respond to this situation? I would like to ask the each of the three panelists these questions. We have Lisa Curtis from the United States, Director Indo-Pacific Security, CNAS, the Center for New American Security. So Ms. Curtis, could you answer those questions first?
Well, thank you very much, and it certainly... Thank you very much. It's certainly a pleasure to be here today. Thank you for the invitation and for those questions. And I think you asked about Japan's security documents and what they say about what's happening in the Taiwan Strait and about maritime security. And certainly, Japan as a maritime nation depends on free and open seaways. It depends on seaways that are free from piracy, that are unimpeded by aggressive actions of other nations. And in the documents, in both the National Security Strategy and the National Defense Strategy, Japan very much commits to strengthening joint deterrence and to trying to shape a security environment that does not tolerate unilateral changes to territorial status quo. And I think the documents are very clear about how Japan is viewing the military activities that are taking place in the Taiwan Strait. And of course, as you mentioned, the NDS highlights the fact that five ballistic missiles landed in Japan's waters during the live-fire exercises that China conducted in the Taiwan Strait in August. And so I think this really brought home to Japan that what happens in the Taiwan Strait has a direct impact on Japan's own national security interest. With regard to Russia's relationship with China, I think we've discussed that quite a bit in this conference. The fact that the No Limits Partnership was signed between China and Russia just three weeks before Russia's invasion of Ukraine has very much alarmed many nations, including Japan, and really motivated, I think, these, the national security documents that we saw coming out of Japan in December. I think it's notable, as you also mentioned, Kotani-san, in your opening comments, that Russia is also accelerating its military activities near Japan and strengthening its cooperation with China in terms of conducting joint exercises, joint navigation of naval vessels, even joint bomber flights near Japan. So for all these reasons, I think the national security documents of Japan have rightly emphasized the need to improve maritime security and have very much committed Japan to doing more things that would protect maritime security, things like overseas port calls, more surveillance, more exercises with other countries, working on more agreements with other countries, like reciprocal access agreements. I think all of these things are important, and we can see that, you know, very much responding to the provocative military exercises that China conducted in the Taiwan Strait last August.
Thank you very much. The same question to the next person.
That is, we would like to hear from Dr. Li from the Prospect Foundation. Dr. Li, please.
Yeah, thank you, Kotani-san, and thanks for having me in this very important panel. And I think the Taiwan Strait crisis or the military tension definitely is rising. And not just last year, the August, after Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi's visit to Taiwan, but also after the Chinese Congress, 20th National CCP Congress, the, its military action against Taiwan continues to rise, especially the violation of mainland Taiwan Straits. The location and also the distance is much closer to Taiwan with a much bigger frequency as well as a much bigger scale. And so that we are looking at the major uptick in terms of the Chinese military activities. And it's not just about the air, in the air, but also, they constantly right now stationed about four to five sea vessels just outside of the 24 nautical miles outside Taiwan. And so that consists a major security concern for Taiwan. And also, the, in terms of the, how the development of the Russians' war on Ukraine, what Taiwan discovered was that Russia started to ally itself also much closer to China as what the people witnessed about Chinese positions moving closer to Russia in terms of how China viewed NATO and the cause of the war on Russia, by Russia, to Ukraine. And China shares Russia's accusations about how NATO and the United States caused the war. And Russia also shared with Chinese positions about the position to the Indo-Pacific Strategy, their position to the FOIP. And just last year, Russia publicly endorsed Chinese position that Taiwan is an island part of the PRC, and so was the North Korea. For both countries, of course, they, that's their longstanding positions, but they haven't been able to spell out that publicly until last year. So that was also a major political uptick in terms of the Chinese position shared by Russia and North Korea. So just like Japan, suddenly find itself, and after the war in Ukraine, Japan faces the threat from China, North Korea, and now adding Russia. And Taiwan also find that in addition to China, the Russia and the North Korea could also play, might play a certain role should China decide to attack Taiwan. And so that the activity by Russia and also the North Korea's certain actions as well as the preparation for the future contingency should China really attack Taiwan, what Russia and the North Korea could do, that's another serious concern. And I think that aspect also brings about the, how we should look at the East Asian possible contingency theaters. We should not and cannot treat the contingency in areas such as Senkaku, an island area, East China Sea, Taiwan Strait, South China Sea, and even the Korean Peninsula as four distinct different theaters and treat them differently. We had to integrate all of them because we believe probably in the future should these contingencies in one area could actually quickly expand to contingency in other area. So those are the major lessons that we take. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, next, from Japan, the former Admiral, we have Mr. Takei, Admiral. I would like to ask him the same question, please, Admiral Takei. Now, for myself, first, the, how, the, I would like to, well, talk about the three strategic domains. The significance of this is it positions China as the greatest strategic challenge that has been, that has ever been faced. Needless to say, well, the U.S. security strategy, it says China has a facing challenge. Now, with respect to the national security strategy, well, the Japan is now at an inflection point to be in a world of hope or a world of difficulty and distrust, which is the most difficult in the post-war world. And this understanding is shared with the United States. And the Prime Minister Kishida says repeatedly that they conducted a very realistic simulation to formulate the national security strategy. And this purpose is to pivot toward the threat opposing defense capabilities, adding the political rationality to militaristic rationality. And also, the, it, the document describes that it's going to, well, drastically strengthen the defense capability focusing on the way the opponent will fight. And now, in the, it says it'll maintain the working relationship on a non-government basis with the Taiwan, but also it will continue to maintain a variety of efforts to, in hoping for the peaceful resolution of the cross-strait issues. And this indicates the Japanese government's very strong intention to, or commitment to peace and stability of the cross-straits. And Japan intends to increase the defense spending to 2% of GDP so that it can seamlessly defend Japan by 2027. 2027 is a year where there's going to be manifestation of Taiwan cross-straits crisis. And so this is indicative of the intention of the Prime Minister Kishida's intention. And now, about the, well, the, how concerned should we be with respect to the sign of Russian strategic coordination? Now, the, both NSS and NDS believes that the strategic relationship between the two countries is a challenge to international order. Although there is a partnership, the purpose may be different. Because for Russia, the, they would like to see the, well, America's diversion from Europe. And for China, the Japan and the United States have a heightened interest in the cross-straits relations. So they would like to check that. And also, China would like to check the, well, the China policy. And so the two countries have different purposes, particularly with Russia. After the invasion of Ukraine, there has been a heightened deployment of strategic bombers. So the European face and Asian front are coordinated. So they can't take two-front operations. Given this, Russia is focusing their attention on the European front. So they don't want, they will not change the circle in the Far East. So given this, what can we do? When we consider this issue, there are three points. One, we should maintain, well, diplomatic engagement with China and Russia. And we should maintain a necessary contact in order to avoid unexpected contingencies or unnecessary tensions. Number two, we should securely monitor the militaristic activities of Russia and China in order to, in preparation for contingencies. Three, we should strengthen information sharing with our friends and allies to fill the geographical gap of information. And with our higher information sharing, we should heighten the transparency of activities of China and Russia so that we can have a leeway in response. And the countries in this region, well, we have to maintain a high coordination.
Thank you very much. We have listened to three panelists with the focus on the current status on the Taiwan Strait, which seems dire. And Japan announced three security-related documents, including NSS and NDS. So I have a follow-up question to the three panelists. One, you, the relationship between U.S. and Taiwan, there's a Taiwan relation act, provision of the weapons, the collaboration among military forces, drills. So that's the security cooperation between these two countries, which is advancing. Whereas between Japan and Taiwan, the active military forces interaction is limited. So, so far, the security cooperation between Japan and Taiwan has not been quite active. But if we look at the current situation of the Taiwan Strait, I think the cooperation between Japan and Taiwan should be promoted. So I would like to ask Professor Takei, from your viewpoint, what do you see, what is missing in the Japan-Taiwan relations? And the same question to Li-san. What kind of security cooperation would you like to see with Japan? And I have a question to Lisa Curtis. Well, U.S. and Taiwan proceeded with the security cooperation so far. But going forward, with the announcement of the three documents, what would kind of Japan-Taiwan security cooperation would you like to see?
I talked about the importance of, the importance of the information sharing among allies to deter China, Russia. But there is a geographic gap in terms of information. Information sharing with Taiwan needs to be happened. Now, between Japan and the U.S., a variety of channels are used for sharing information. But with Taiwan, the relationship with the country is only at the working level. There's not much sufficient information sharing. I talked about the national security strategy in connection with the relationship with Taiwan. It says the center, it centers around the working relationship with Taiwan. But as you know, it has changed in coordination with the global relationship. It has expanded in the maritime relationship as well. For example, the, there's a coastal guard in Taiwan. And, well, there is a liaison contact point for the maritime, well, search and rescue. And, well, the, if there is a maritime accident for, this is to exchange information for, well, accidents. And this is based on the MOU of December 2017. But there is no hotline, there is no military contact point. And so the contingency, it might happen not with China only, but Taiwan as well. So the, maybe it is not likely that the strategic partnership between Russia and China will not impact Taiwan. But as can be evidenced by Russia, an unforeseen contingency might happen. So we should establish a liaison mechanism between Japan and China as well. So there, so real-time information sharing should be created, happen. There's no color in information, how to use it. Information is at the discretion of countries. So information sharing should be able to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Li Chong, please.
Yeah, thank you. I think I just share with Merle Takei his concern about the need for the information sharing intelligence as well between Japan and Taiwan. But I think that those are the obvious need. But what really is lack of is that, first of all, in the U.S.-Japan, within the U.S.-Japan alliances, about the Taiwan contingency, the planning itself. And second, how to integrate Taiwan, especially in terms of the, when we talk, when they talk about Taiwan and have Taiwanese people, their perspective and their input into the whole process. And also improve the strategic level of the communication between Taiwan and the U.S.-Japan alliances. Because we believe that whatever will happen in the Taiwan Strait, and Japan probably will participate, should it decided to participate in, to help the defense of Taiwan, will be through the U.S.-Japan alliance system. So that we need to discuss first, within the U.S.-Japan alliance system, and then the Taiwan-Japan security cooperation, all kind of mechanism that could follow through because of that. So I think that right now, we haven't been able to talk about this process. That could be the starting point for a lot of other things. And also, I share with Takei Merle, his suggestion regarding the, in terms of peacetime, the coast guard cooperation. But I would just like to stress that the peacetime cooperation and the wartime cooperation, those are, we have two distinct characters about them. So that the expectation that how the peacetime cooperation could gradually move up to the wartime, sometimes we had to be aware of the institutional constraints about those. And I just hope that this could be, to be able to conquer it. And finally, I would say that the current mechanism in Japan office and also Taiwan office in Japan in terms of how the liaison that could, that could be established, I also second his idea. And I just wish that the liaison officers from Japan to Taiwan, that could be sent as fast as possible and with the relative authority in terms of how to transmit the data as well as the analysis and also the orders that could, that could be able to facilitate the communication between Taiwan and Japan, and of course, also with the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a really interesting question about increased Japan-Taiwan cooperation. And I think we can certainly see through the new national security documents that Japan is already thinking in these terms because of what's been happening over the last few years and in particular, the provocative Chinese military exercises in the Taiwan Strait last August. But I think we can see that the first time that Japan had mentioned Taiwan in a joint statement with the United States was actually about two years ago under the former Prime Minister Suga. So that was sort of a first step, I think, for Japan and thinking about its relationship with Taiwan. And, you know, we've heard about the importance of information sharing. And also, it was mentioned about planning. And I would really emphasize that this is an important aspect of the cooperation that's necessary. And this can also involve the U.S. So that you have Japan, U.S., Taiwan trilateral dialogues looking at contingency planning, what can be done to prevent a military blockade of Taiwan, which is something we're all concerned about. So I think, yeah, these would be the most important things in addition to thinking about joint military exercises, training, these kinds of cooperation between Japan and Taiwan, I think would be very welcome from the U.S. perspective. And then lastly, looking at more statements. As I mentioned, we can already see some forward-leaning statements from Japan in the national security documents talking about the importance of territorial sovereignty, not allowing unilateral changes to territory. I think this is very much with an eye toward Taiwan. But building on that and seeing more public statements recognizing the importance of not allowing Taiwan to be subject to military coercion or military intimidation. And even eventually, if we can see the issue of Taiwan included in Quad statements, I think this may be a heavy lift with a country like India in particular. But I think it would be very important. We saw very strong statements regarding Taiwan from the trilateral Defense Ministerial involving U.S., Australia, and Japan. But perhaps in the future, we can start to see some of these statements coming out of the Quad as well.
Thank you very much. And another additional question that I would like to ask you. And, well, Dr. Li was saying about the Korean Peninsula. And that is related to the Taiwan contingency. And if Taiwan contingency, of course, it's also possible that that could spread to the Korean Peninsula. And I think now experts are talking about that. On the other hand, last year, the UN administration came into being and they are taking a different position from before. And they have Indo-Pacific Strategy announced. And with regards to the relationship with China, it seems that it is different and it is a very realistic way of thinking. And I believe that U.S.-Japan ROK cooperation is to be promoted. So I would like to ask Dr. Li, that is, from the perspective of Taiwan, the peace and stability in the Taiwan Straits, what kind of role can Korea play? And what kind of relationship does Taiwan want to have with the Republic of Korea? And also, Professor Takei and Ms. Curtis, and from the U.S.-Japan alliance perspective, well, ROK is starting to take a very pragmatic kind of position. And in the past, the discussion was about what to do about the DPRK. But... But in the context of Japan-US and ROK, if we think about Indo-Pacific and Taiwan Strait issues, what is it that should be done? So if you could respond to these questions. And first of all, if we could ask Dr. Li, please.
Yeah, thank you. That's a very interesting questions. And the connection between Taiwan Strait and Korean Peninsula, that has always been existent. Whether that's in 1950s, the war on Ukraine actually changed the US policy toward Taiwan. And also the year 2003, just in the height of the anti-terrorism campaign, how China utilizes or through the United States outsourcing its diplomacy to China on the North Korean issues that gave Chinese the leverage about the position on Taiwan. So that in Taiwan, I think the strategic community always is very concerned about the connection between Korea, Korea Peninsula and Taiwan and what might be in the negative consequences toward Taiwan. But I think right now that the Republic of Korea issue an Indo-Pacific strategy and basically also the strategic directions it adopted is in the process of improving the US-Japan and ROK, the trilateral cooperation, which in our view is a very positive. Because of belief of foster a greater coordination and cooperation for the first island chain, especially in the Northeast Asia. And that could be the foundation for the general security and stability in this area. Although we understand that ROK for various reasons tend not to speak out loud regarding Taiwan. But ROK also, even during the Moon Jae-won's government, also came on board in a summit meeting regarding, talk about the emphasis about the security and stability across the Taiwan Straits. So also to us that that is something that we take that to heart and thank him for that. The issue about how the Taiwan expects the ROK to play in the issue of the Taiwan Strait contingency. I would say that first of all, the ROK needs to take care of the security in the Korean Peninsula. And there's a possibility that North Korea might want to do something to distract both Japan and the United States. Should China launch the attack against Taiwan to distract both Japan and the United States from assisting Taiwan through the North Korea. And so that the first order of thing definitely is to prevent that possibility or at least to degrade that possibility from happening. And second is that China, when talks about the military action on Taiwan, the military theater, we believe will be from the Eastern Theater Command and with some assistance from Southern Theater Command. But we do believe that the Central CMC and all the different, the important decision still will be made back in Beijing in which that many other information coming from there in which the Korean Peninsula is a very close proximity that can provide ample, the possible, the tool and the means for the information to probe about what is happening there. And the third, I will say that the Korean Peninsula and also the Japan, the United States, I hope that we could extend it finally to incorporate also the Philippines in this development. As the Takei Merle, he just said about the importance of the information sharing. In this, the Nancy Pelosi's visit and the Chinese exercise on Taiwan episode, we actually find out that there's a discrepancy in terms of Japan and Taiwan talk about the number of the missile that China fire. And that basically demonstrates that the information itself is such an important issues to get everyone together. But I also say that the facing the possible involvement of Southern Theater Command and also the Chinese heavy emphasis in the Bashi Channel, in which some of the Chinese military activity could also endanger Japan. I think the Philippines' involvement and integrate Philippines into the mixture would also be very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Almutake, please. Japan-US ROK, how that affects Taiwan? In the Korean Peninsula, if there is a contingency in Korean Peninsula, ROK would have to dedicate itself to that. If there is a contingency in Taiwan Strait, North Korea, if they begin some operations now in preparation for that, ROK, well, I think there can be only limited support to Taiwan from ROK. Between, well, ROK and North Korea, there may be a big gap in terms of military. But with just military operations, but the refugees from, the refugees from North Korea might have to be dealt with by ROK. Given this, even if North Korea might act in one way or another, ROK has to just focus on that. So to repeat, I don't think there is no military way to go to Taiwan Strait. So what can be done? When you consider this, the only thing in addition to information sharing, there is another possible avenue for cooperation, and that is Japan and Taiwan and ROK. They all were dependent on import of energy from overseas. So from gray zone to war contingencies, stable import of energy is one area where there can be cooperation. That must happen, actually. And the crisis in Taiwan Strait with Ukrainian war is prolongation. Then this need would be heightened. All these countries, there's only a limited natural gas stockpile. So Australia or Southeast Asia or Middle East, they have to be, they have to cooperate to secure import. And so regarding the safety of maritime, well, sea lanes, there has to be a cooperation. As Dr. Li said earlier, Philippines and Malaysia and Australia, they have to cooperate to secure safety of the maritime traffic. So that has to be done. And here, this region, in the, if there is a crisis in Taiwan Strait, China's A2AD curtain, the Taiwan Strait would be within that curtain. And China has a very strong navy power. And the, from straight, well, the cooperation among the navies would also be important. So from the stage of gray zone, in preparation for the contingency, how to maintain the sea lanes is something that we need to consider right now toward 2027. If there is a heightening crisis, unless we start this, it would be too late. But there can be nothing that can be done. If you do it, try to do it immediately. So from gray zone, in order to avoid a contingency happening, we have to have discussion about what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Curtis, please.
Thank you. Yes, I think with the new UN government, there are tremendous opportunities for both Japan and Korea to work together. But also, just in the overall outlook of the UN administration, which has coined its foreign policy outlook to be a global pivotal state or GPS, meaning that they are looking beyond just the Korean Peninsula in terms of their foreign policy. And we very much saw that with the release of the Indo-Pacific Strategy a few months ago from Korea. So this presents really unique and positive opportunities for the trilateral dialogue between the US, Japan, and Korea. Now, of course, the immediate focus will be on the dangerous activities that we see the DPRK government engaging in. These are the missile tests. We even just saw ballistic missile test on Saturday. So that will be the immediate concern, I think, for the trilateral, US-ROK-Japan trilateral talks. But moving forward, I think, you know, there will be opportunities to talk about the broader Indo-Pacific. For example, things like technology cooperation. Japan and Korea being, you know, technology leaders, there's a lot that can be done in terms of semiconductors, for one. We've already seen the establishment of the so-called Fabulous Four, the US-Taiwan-Japan-Korea discussions on semiconductors. That can be taken forward. And, and yes, the issue of the security situation in the Taiwan Strait is something else that can be taken forward between the three countries, US-ROK and Japan, moving forward. And just to pick up on one of the other speaker's comments on the Philippines and the important role that they play as well when talking about security in the Taiwan Strait. The US has made a lot of progress in its relationship with the Philippines. Over the last several months, there's been a flurry of activity between our two countries, the bilateral security dialogue that took place in January, recent visit by Secretary Austin to the Philippines in which the two sides decided to increase the number of bases that the US would have access to, actually doubling those from five to 10 bases, which is certainly important for the US and any potential contingencies in the Taiwan Strait. So I think this is part of what we would call networked deterrence. All of these countries working together, US, Japan, Korea, Philippines, and, and, you know, looking toward keeping a stable and secure Taiwan Strait. All of these countries have a role to play. And there's a great need for continued discussions and deeper discussions about planning for any potential contingencies.
Thank you very much. Next, I have another question to all the panelists. But before that, well, of course, we'll have a Q and A session at the end. Please use Zoom function to send in your questions. I have a question to Ms. Curtis about the role of India. India has very deep economic ties with Taiwan. But in the, so far, India has not referred to the importance of the peace and stability in the Taiwan Strait so far. But if you look at Quad or its relation with the East Asia, maritime security, Taiwan Strait contingency, India cannot ignore this, especially on the Taiwan Strait issue. What is the position of India? What kind of role is it willing to play or willing not to play? Next to Mr. Li and Mr. Takei. In SCS and the ECS, there are gray zone activities by China. And this, through this challenge of gray zone activities, there is a threat on the sovereignty in the countries there, Japan, Taiwan, and US. What kind of cooperation should we form or advance in order to cope with that? Ms. Curtis first.
Thank you. Yes, you're right that India has been reticent to speak up too much about Taiwan. And I think that's because of India's concern about its border disputes with China and what's been happening recently in terms of increased intrusions and border clashes between India-China. However, I think that is beginning to change. I think we have seen India more willing to engage directly with Taiwan, increase economic cooperation. Taiwan is investing in a semiconductor plant in India. So we've definitely seen an increase in their economic and trade and investment linkages. So that is beginning to change. But in terms of broader maritime security, I think we should look at things like the Quad Initiative for Maritime Domain Awareness. This was the initiative that was announced following the Quad Summit in Tokyo last May. And this is aimed at allowing the Indo-Pacific nations to develop a common operating picture of what's happening in their own territorial waters, EEZs, so that they can protect their own sovereignty. So this is a very important initiative. India is obviously a very important part of that initiative. And of course, India has an information fusion center in New Delhi that contributes to this idea of building maritime domain awareness among the Indo-Pacific nations. So very much has a role to play there. And we can also point to the annual Malabar Naval Exercises, which have involved India, the US, and Japan in recent years. And more recently, Australia has been invited. Now, for many years, Australia was not part of the Malabar Naval Exercises. And I think India had refrained from inviting Australia in deference to China and to not provoke China. However, after the 2020 India-China border crisis, which resulted from China's military buildup along their disputed borders and in fact, led to a clash between the two countries that resulted in the first loss of life on the India-China border since 1975. After that happened, then India did invite Australia to the Malabar Naval Exercises. And now Australia is regularly joining these exercises. And in fact, it's just been announced that the next Malabar Naval Exercise will happen off the coast of Australia for the first time in August. So I think we see that India has a very important role to play in broader maritime security issues in the Indo-Pacific region and is starting to build relations with Taiwan and will be more willing to, you know, stand up for Taiwan and against any military coercion or intimidation of Taiwan. Because India faces this kind of intimidation itself at its own borders. So I think this is motivating India to want to do and say more about the challenges that Taiwan is facing.
Mr. Li, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, first of all, I just second what Lisa just said, that yes, the India-Taiwan, especially economic relation in the recent several years, progressed tremendously. And India quoted the FOSCOM, the investment for the electronic vehicle, in addition to the semiconductor plant. So that, things are moving. And India also started to break some of the taboo, although we just hope that it can break faster, go deeper. But India has its own very unique pace due to its own very unique consideration. Going back to the issues about the East China Sea and South China Sea regarding the Chinese gray zone operation. I think, first of all, all the country, including the South Korea, Japan, Taiwan, Philippine, and Southeast Asia country that experienced, including Vietnam, experienced the Chinese gray zone operation country, we should establish a consultation mechanism to compare notes about what we experienced about the, from Chinese gray zone operations. It is important to note that we need to compare even to the detail about what kind of asset they are sending, even to the number, serial number, and the personnel they are there. In order to know the deployment pattern as well as when they are sending this asset to one region with the same asset, also send to other region at different time. Because that will help us to understand the way that China is operating those gray zone operation as well as the resource limitations about what they can actually do. So that's the first thing. And second thing is And second thing is that the, when we talk about the gray zone operation, there's also the need for those countries experience a similar concern by China, need to come out together and exercise with the eye about how to correspond to those gray zone operations. What China did to, just like what they did to the, in the South China Sea toward the Southeast Asian countries, is that China want to do that bilaterally, so that can focus all their national resources into one single country and force them and wear them down and also wear them down in terms of their resources and force them to accept the Chinese objective. So that if we are able to at least come together and to discuss among ourselves about the collective way to deal with, sometimes the collective way of deal with, not necessarily in terms of the military or the kinetic, but also in terms of political as well as economic, how to deal with the Chinese gray zone operation. Those are the things that, that is needed because we need to let Chinese know that they cannot just bully one by one and separate all of us and then we all go down. And they have to face the country, they started to work together, and they will go face a group of country rather than just single one country. That's my view. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Professor Takei, about the gray zone. Well, from my side, with regards to East China Sea and South China Sea, and China trying to change the status quo, there is the China Coast Guard and the maritime militia. And so what about this concern and this response? I'd like to think about that. Now, the China Coast Guard vessels are becoming bigger and their activities are increasing, that's a fact. And in recent years, the vessels, they are speeding up, increasing the size. And according to Japanese Coast Guard data, it's about three times in terms of 1,000 ton vessels that can go to the high seas. It's three times. And that's already two times in terms of Japanese Coast Guard vessels. And they are right now reinforcing the vessels on side of the Japanese Coast Guard, too. And in terms of the heavy arming, according to DOD report last year and also domestic reports, there are 20 or so corvette missiles. They've left 76 millimeter guns, and they have now been rehabilitated so that the Chinese Coast Guard can use them. So you have this larger size and more arms, and the means used by the China Coast Guard and the maritime militia are diversifying and escalating. And oftentimes, these vessels, vis a vis the fishing vessels of Vietnam and Philippines, they become coercive and have violent harassment. In other words, they spray a lot of water to inundate them, or the smokestack is inundated so that it breaks down, or maybe there is aggressive maneuver vessels and slamming their vessels to the other vessels and seizing fishing tools. So if the vessel is bigger, this becomes more effective, and it is, in a skirmish, an advantage in dealing with the foreign maritime law enforcement agencies. So taking up arms along with these water cannons, it could be the case that opportunities could be made to change the status quo. Now, in the South China Sea, vis a vis the maritime governance weak countries, the Chinese Coast Guard and also the maritime militia are changing the status quo. However, in the East China Sea, we don't see too many of such incidents. And according to the research institute, the gray zone options are being weakened. In other words, where the governance is weak, the status quo is being changed. And so in the gray zone of China, in order to deal with this change of the status quo, we need to support those countries with weak governance. And also, there needs to be the reinforcement of cyber resilience, you know, there's global information sharing, and also with IMO and private enterprises, that can be the cooperative action, and that would be a means to deter the actions in the gray zone. Thank you very much. So with regards to the Taiwan Strait, we've been talking about the Indo-Pacific security issues. And in the, well, time remaining, which is limited, we would like to take up some questions from the floor. And because of time limitations, I'm going to maybe ask a couple of questions together. That is Japan and the United States with regards to one China policy being maintained. The US side has the strategic vagueness, and not strategic vagueness, but some people say maybe the American commitment should be made clearer. And on this point, Japan-US Taiwan perspective with regards to the defense of Taiwan, perhaps there should be a clearer commitment by the surrounding nations. So I'd like to ask you to answer this question just one minute and reasons for your view. So Curtis, stand, please.
Look, I think there are very good reasons for the US policy of strategic ambiguity when it comes to Taiwan. So I, I don't think there's any push in the United States to change that. And in fact, there have been a lot of questions raised because, of course, President Biden has mentioned on a few occasions, he's been very, very clear about the US defending Taiwan. So I think, you know, it's clear that the US, you know, would defend Taiwan. But at the same time, I think this, this policy of ambiguity has served an important purpose, and there's really no reason to, you know, officially change that policy. I think that, you know, to the extent that President Biden has been more clear on that, there, there must have been a particular need for, for being more direct on that issue. But I think in general, the US would not like to, to change that policy of strategic ambiguity. And the hope is that there is no need to, to clarify that, that we don't see the military intimidation and coercion of the kind that we saw last summer.
Well, Professor Takei, between Japan and Taiwan, there are political constraints, and that says it all, but militarily speaking, Japan and Taiwan becoming like Ukraine and Poland, well, I would think that these are close democracies, and Taiwan is a close country to Japan and vice versa. That is, well, is Japan going to be Poland or Ukraine, and is Taiwan going to be Ukraine and Poland? I don't know, but Japan and Taiwan militarily deepening the ties, I think, is necessary. Thank you very much, Dr. Li, from the perspective of Taiwan, please.
Yeah, thank you. I think the, from Taiwan, of course, we just hope that the, the commitment will be made clear as a way of deterrence against the Chinese possible invasion. That will be very helpful. Of course, we also understand that the argument about the sustaining the, not to discard the strategic ambiguity altogether. So the issue is basically about how to dissuade China from attacking Taiwan through the public statement and the commitment, and also the real cooperation between Japan, US, and Taiwan so we can work together. And another thing I'd like to mention is that because right now the ambiguity, people talk about maintaining ambiguity is about to, not to let Chinese to their excuse of their escalating their tension or their start a war and provoking against Taiwan. But I think another issue about the ambiguity is that how that will lead to the other friendly nations has a concern about the Taiwan Strait. Would that lead to their ambiguity regarding their stance and the expectation as well? So that is right now, the people really need to ponder hard about this, how the ambiguity will also affect the friendly nations, not just about what Chinese perception. That is another strategic concern that we need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, over the, while centering around the Taiwan Strait issues, what the three countries need to do, well, Philippine, India, Australia, these are regional nations, what sort of cooperation can happen? Well, we discussed around these issues. And, well, from the perspectives of the US, Japan, and Taiwan, I thank the participants very much. So with this, I'd like to conclude this session. Now, part two follow about the impact of Ukrainian war, we will resume at 3:00 PM. Thank you for your participation.